Stand for our flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for everybody coming to the December Board of Trustees meeting. Okay, the first thing, we have the consent agenda. We have three additions to the agenda. We have P., St. Clair County Clerk's Office, invoice plain four dash jersey one one zero five C eight, Pam Blau Incorporated, invoice one two zero nine, one two zero nine two four, and deputy clerk appointment. Is there any other additions or questions?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with the three additions.
Okay, do we have support? We have motion support to approve the consent agenda with the three agenda additions. Okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Still not here.
Okay.
Hold on, you supported it?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Okay, citizens comment. Anyone, members of the citizens can comment. We'll have another one at the end of the meeting if you would like to talk about it. Okay, okay. The first, okay, let's get there first. The first thing is Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirteen, Resolution to Adopt the Earn Sick Time Act. This is something we need to do, provide for our employees, starting on, starting on February, February twenty-first of two thousand twenty-five. It's a state law that we have to provide this for our, our employees here in the township hall. It's a state coming out, so. Okay, does anyone have any questions on this?
I think it's pretty soft explained, please.
Yeah.
Then I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution two zero two four dash one three, Resolution to Adopt Earn Sick Time Act for Casco Township employees.
I'll say.
Okay, we have motion support to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirteen, Resolution to Adopt Earn Sick Time Act for Casco Township employees. Okay, we just go, do we have, if this is?
Just those I's on there.
Okay, okay. All in favor of adopting this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Ayes, have it. Okay, all right, your business. First one, A, is budget amendments. Does anyone have any questions on this very top one here? I, I don't know. I, I, this is something that Wes was, Wes Messing was saying that we, we moved from our long-term savings to pay for this.
You need to have an account number.
Yeah.
I, I have to, when I, when you put in it, you have to have an account number, so you can't take a hundred, maybe thousands.
We, we did transfer a while back.
But it's different for when, when you're transferring, and then the budget, and it's like a whole.
Yes, that's why I'm not following this, so yes, we need an account number.
Yeah, well, how about, okay.
Oh, I have more.
From where?
All right.
I have more.
Okay, I, I, um, show me what pages we're working, we're working with this.
Yes.
All right.
So, on the second grouping of amendments, that first one, when you, when you do these, I think instead of saying current account balance, you should put year-to-date balance, because if you look at your spreadsheet, your current account balance and your amount over amount under is like exactly the same.
Okay.
So, I would change that for next time and just do like a year-to-date balance, so that you can see how much is being already spent on that account. So, that first one in the second grouping, the miscellaneous one, you have the wrong, what did you put on there? You put, what is this one, there it is. You put the year-to-date balance instead of the current balance. So then, if you, if you did the two thousand, it would only leave us with a hundred and seventy-three fifty-two, and that's not enough for, for that account for the rest of the year. And then on that, the last one in that grouping, um, that's not going to be enough for the, the rest of the year either. What I did is I went into that account and the year-to-date on that is ten thousand nine hundred forty fifty. I divided it by eight, which is how many months is already done on this budget? And then I multiplied that by twelve, and it may be sixteen thousand four ten would be like the total, if, if all the hours and everything stay the same. So there's not going to be enough, like if you do the amendment, you might as well do it so that there's enough, so you don't have to do another budget amendment next month or the month after.
Okay.
And then on the, the third grouping there, nine one four. I don't think we need to increase, I thought that one, you just had to increase it by ninety-six. I don't think you have to do four hundred, because I don't think there would be anything else coming out of there. And then on the fourth grouping, I really don't think you should take money out of the road commission if you're worried about having enough in there. Just my personal opinion, otherwise you're going to be doing another budget amendment for that. That's what I got.
Um, we speak two different languages when it comes, I, um. I follow this. I don't have your account numbers. In what account? And we're talking the first grouping, what did I give you?
When I'm saying grouping, when I was just talking about group, I was talking about this spreadsheet.
So much.
Yep. Yet we don't know about that one, he doesn't know.
Yeah.
Even the first amount, twenty-one. All right, so if you don't mind, I'm speaking with this.
So what's your recommendation on this?
We have to, we need to fix it. I can't approve that, I don't know if everybody else on the board, I, I agree with that.
Okay, let me fix it up and then next one.
All right, are you getting classes?
I was working with my budget coach yesterday.
Okay, because you have to have a final budget.
I know.
Two weeks before the March annual meeting.
I know.
Final, not a, not a proposed budget amendments have to be done for this one. So there's a time crunch. This happened last year and the year before and the year before. I'm not coming in to save the day at the end, not.
I understand.
So we'll postpone that for next meeting?
Okay. Uh, B, the two thousand twenty-four winter taxes for Meisner Road property. This is for our property on Meisner Road. We have the amount of property taxes we have to pay is eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve the taxes for the property on Meisner Road.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to pay you the taxes on Meisner Road. Is there any other question? Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Still not here.
Okay, motion carries. Next one is the Casco Township twenty twenty-five farmland rental agreement extension. Mr. Campo has agreed to continue renting our farmland there on Meisner Road. But due to increase in taxable value, the amount of rent needs to be increased by two hundred dollars and, two hundred and sixteen dollars seventeen cents from three thousand six hundred and thirty-four to thirty-eight, three thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars seventeen cents. However, due to impending wetland termination of four acres, a discount of eight percent is appropriate. The amount due by, um, will be due by December thirty-third, twenty twenty-four, would be three thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
I make a motion to approve the farmland rental agreement extension for twenty twenty-five.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the farmland rental agreement extension for twenty twenty-five. Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Still not here.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next one is AF Group invoice, um, one zero zero one seven two two one one zero. This has to do with our insurance policy.
Workers' count?
Yeah, workers' count.
It's the, for the premium for the year.
Yeah, so we have, the amount is two thousand, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Make motion to pay the AF Group invoice.
Okay, motion support to pay the AF Group invoice for two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Still not here.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, um, Jennifer, you want to take this one? This is, uh.
Yep, um, we have a constable who juts the liquor inspections for us, um, and there is a separate account, it's a liquor fund. And we have sixteen thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-three cents in there. We can only use it for liquor inspections. Um, through the years, there hasn't, there wasn't any raises for many, many years, and then with COVID, we got shut down. Um, a lot of the bars and stuff weren't open for a little bit, the party stores weren't open for a little bit. So we have a, a overabundance, and we could get in trouble, I think, with the liquor, the state liquor. Yes, so anyway, I am proposing that we increase the constable's compensation per inspection from forty dollars per inspection to seventy-five per inspection. Um, and that will take a little bit more, like, right now, we, we got almost five thousand dollars from the state. Um, and I think when all is said and done at the, at the end of the year, it'll be about fifty-one hundred that we paid out. So we're only taking like two hundred dollars out of the fund every year. So this'll dwindle it down a little bit, and then, um, if we get to a point where we think we're going too low, then we'll have to cut that back, obviously.
Then I'll make a motion to increase the liquor inspection fee payments.
How so?
To seventy-five dollars.
Okay, we have motion support to increase the compensation for the constable for each inspection from forty to seventy-five dollars. Okay, okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Still not here.
Okay, we have, uh, motion carries. We have Board of Trustees meeting two thousand twenty-five. It's, um, will be January twenty, January fourteenth, February eleventh, March eleventh, April eighth, May thirteenth, June tenth, July eighth, August twelfth, September ninth, October fourteenth, November tenth. This is a Monday, because the next day, Tuesday, would be Veterans Day, and December ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Each meeting are held on the second Tuesday at seven PM each month otherwise stated. All meetings are held here at the Casco Township Hall, thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-nine, numero de Casco, mission, product, zero, six, four.
I make a motion to pass the meeting dates for two thousand twenty-five of the Board of Trustees.
Who's for it? We have motion support to, uh, pass the, the two thousand twenty-five Casco Township Board of Trustees meeting date. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next one is Casco Township office holiday closing schedule. This is based on what the court, um.
St. Clair County.
St. Clair County Court. We have New Year's Day, we have Martin Luther King Day, that's the Jan, twentieth of January, President's Day, February seventeenth, Memorial Day, May twenty-sixth, Juneteenth, June nineteenth, um, Fourth of July observed, it'll be July third. That'd be a Thursday. Labor Day, Veterans Day is November eleventh, Labor Day was September first. Date before Thanksgiving would be November twenty-sixth, Thanksgiving Day, November twenty-seventh, Christmas Eve Day, December twenty-fourth, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve Day, and New Year's Day, two thousand twenty-sixth.
I make a motion to accept in post the Casco Township holiday closing schedule.
Support.
We have motion support to, um, to accept the Casco Township holiday's closing schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next one is reappointments to the Board of Review. I would like to reappoint Roger Sloan, Chris Stevens, and Jean Uvalde as Board Review members for a two-year term, starting the first of January, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And Chuck, Chuck Gibson is Board Review alternate for a two-year term, starting January first, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Does Chuck need to take any kind of training?
Yeah.
You're going to set that up, or?
Yeah. Yeah. Eric, shall I just send it to me on my page?
Okay. I make a motion to approve the reappointments to the Board of Review as stated.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to, uh, for the individuals to the appointment of Board Review for a two-year term from January first, twenty twenty-five, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. I'd like to consider, I'd like to appoint Brian Hake to a two-year term, start as a bulk Board Review alternate for a two-year term, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, ending December twenty-sixth, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The Board Reviews can have two alternates, just like the Plan Commission can have one alternate. Both those bodies are quasi-judicial bodies, that's why they're allowed alternate. Why Board Review allow two, but we definitely need two alternates.
He's going to get trained, too?
He's going to get trained, too.
I make a motion to appoint Brian Hake to the, um, Township Board of Review as an alternate beginning January first, twenty twenty-five, and the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
We have motion support to appoint Brian Hake to a two-year term as a Board Review alternative, alternate from January first, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a reappointment to the Casco Township Board of Appeal, but I'd like to reappoint Hugo Mancini to a three-year term. The Casco Township Zoning Board of Appeal starting January first, twenty four, twenty-five, and ending December twenty, thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
I assume.
Support.
We have support, and, um, and a motion support to reappoint Hugo Mancini to a three-year term from January first, twenty twenty-five, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I would like, okay, next one is appointment of Board Representative to Casco Township Zoning Board of Appeal. I would like to appoint Dan Gold, the, the Golston, as the Board of Representative, Casco Township. Zoning Board Appeal starting January first, twenty twenty-five, and ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
We need to change the ending date to November seventh, that's the date of the election.
November seventh, okay. Okay.
I assume.
I'll support.
We have motion support to reappoint Dan Golston to appoint as the Board Representative to the ZBA, starting January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and ending November seventh, twenty twenty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Reappointments to the Casco Township Plan Commission. I would like to reappoint Dan Hill and John Sarkon to a three-year term for the Casco Township Plan Commission, starting January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
I assume.
I'll support.
Okay, yeah, both of you guys are doing good work here. Okay, we have a motion support to reappoint Dan Hill and John Sarkon to the Casco Township Plan Commission for a three-year term, starting one January twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one is appointment, um, I have a bit here, I have a thing for, from Keith Teltow. I thought he had resigned, but his appointment was just ending, and he just, I just want to read this out, okay. Hi, Joey, after ten years on the Plan Commission, I've decided it's time for me to quit. This has been a great learning experience to be part of the township decision-making process with respect to our neighbors and zoning ordinance. I believe we have established a working relationship with the building department and the township departments. The progress of moving a project through a system is not always easy, an easy journey, but with Brenda, Katie, Roland, and you, we've made it happen. Today's Plan Commission will have more challenges, but I know they have the tools to lead the township in the future development that will benefit all of Casco residents. I wish them continued success. With that, December meeting will be my last. Happy holidays regarding Keith Teltow. In Keith's place, I'd like to appoint Bill Johnstone. He's, um, his wife serves on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Young man, wants to get involved with the township, and, um, he's, the gentleman's a ferrier in life, so he's a horse shiller. So I would like to appoint Bill Johnstone to a three-year term to the Casco Township Plan Commission, starting January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
I assume.
Support.
Okay, and we have motion support, um, to appoint Bill Johnstone to a three-year term to, to the Plan Commission, starting the first of January, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. He would have been here tonight, but he's at one of his kid's Christmas, uh, plays or, or pageants or that, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Appointment as Board Representative to the Casco Township Plan Commission. I'd like to appoint Gina Kaczynski as Board Representative to the Casco Township Plan Commission, starting January first, twenty twenty-five, and ending November seventh, twenty twenty-eight.
So.
Okay.
Support.
We have motion support to appoint Gina Kaczynski as Board Representative to the Casco Plan Commission, starting January first, twenty twenty-five, and ending November seventh, twenty twenty-eight. You sure don't want to forget. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion carries. Okay, the next one here, this here, there's a culvert that might, so what's brought me? It's a putty cut road between Beethe Road and County Line. This is not one of the five large culverts over County Trail that were placed, it's like a medium-sized culvert. Okay, they have to do engineering work on this, okay? If we approve this engineering thing, the five thousand dollars, if we do this culvert replacement within two years, we do not have to pay the five thousand. If we wait past two years to replace the culvert, we got to pay five thousand dollars. The culvert's in pretty bad shape, I suspect we're going to do it much sooner than two years.
Well, I make a motion to replace the culvert.
Well, this would be to approve the engineering.
To approve the engineering?
Yeah, the, the survey design permitting of the failing crossroad culvert.
So we could get it all done in two years with the engineering and all that?
Yeah, the engineer won't take that long, but, um, they'll give us the cost, what it'll cost to replace the culvert when they do the final engineering.
So I'll make a motion to have the engineering started on this?
Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support. Um, I would say, um, I would just read this right here.
Survey design and permitting of a failing crossroad culvert, Putty Cut Road, over Meltrum Drain, one thousand and twenty feet west of Beethe Road.
Okay, danger, okay, okay. Um, any other question? This would be a roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Still not here.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next one is the St. Clair County Clerk's Office. We have Angela, Jennifer, do you want to?
It's just our invoice from November's election for them to do the coding, um, the newspaper publications, which we split with everybody in the county, which actually saves us a lot of money, um, the ballot folding and the ballot shipping. So it's thirty-five hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
All right, you made a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I know I didn't, I'm, I'm forward in doing this.
All right, so Colleen made a motion to approve this, and you support?
Yes.
Okay, support this. For St. Clair County Clerk's Office, uh, three thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars.
I just support it.
Eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Still not here.
Okay. This is from P., Pam Blau Incorporated. This is, uh, this is Casco Township Belvedere Park, Phase One Oversight. This is to continue to answer contractors' questions during construction, review contractor quote addition to the driveway entrance and comment. Prepare to present comments to the Township Board, prepared to change order regarding entrance apron, and it's an amount of seven hundred and twenty dollars.
I have a question, how, how much more do they have to do with this whole?
This, this shouldn't.
This is it?
So, yeah, yeah. I asked, I called pay him up today when I saw this mask in her, so. Okay.
I'll make a motion to pay seven hundred and twenty dollars to Pam Blau Incorporated for the services she provided.
Okay.
Or her company provided for our, uh, River, Bell River Park.
Yeah.
Support.
We have motion support to pick, um, Pam Blau Incorporated, seven hundred and five dollars for, um, the oversight of, um, of Phase One of Casco Township Belvedere Park. Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Still not here.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Our deputy clerk appointment. Jennifer, you want to hear it?
Yes, I would like to appoint Jillian Ruiz as my deputy clerk. She's currently a student at Macomb Community College pursuing a degree in business. She will begin working on a part-time basis with an increase in hours as needed, especially during election time, and I would like to start her salary up at nineteen dollars an hour.
I assume.
I'll support.
Yeah, motion support to appoint Jillian Ruiz.
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 Excuse me.
That's okay. We'll learn how to say that.
Yeah, I'm sure I will.
Like Ruiz, Ruiz.
As deputy clerk, um, on a part-time basis with an increase in hours as needed, especially during elections. And for nineteen dollars now. Okay, we have, we have motion support?
Yes.
All right, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Oh, Stevens, yes?
Still not here.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I want to get, like, effective, like, now, never, so she can start.
Okay, gotcha, motion carries. Okay, citizens' comments. Anyone would like to comment on?
I'm surprised you haven't.
No. Oh, I have one question, though.
Sir?
What are they serving on Twenty-Sixth and Church?
What's that?
They're surveying Twenty-Sixth and Church.
I, you know what, I saw, sir, they were out today on, on Meltrum, on the other road, the, the, the old crew chief is retiring, and the new crew chief. So they might just have been out surveying projects that we have going.
Yeah, Mr. Mini, they're looking, they're going to be, they're going to be putting a center turn lane there, a church road like a good Beethe Road.
Like a good Beethe Way.
And they're going to be doing that at Meltrum as well.
Oh, so Meltrum and Church are going to get that.
But I know the church road one's going to be more, it's, I think it's going to be next summer, they're going to be doing that, so.
And they wouldn't even ride in Twenty-Sixth.
What's that, when you say highway?
When are they going to? When are they gonna widen Twenty-Sixth?
I don't know, that's...
I mean, that's, you can't even pull out between five o'clock, forget it, you ain't getting out. And early in the morning, you ain't getting out on there.
Yeah, that's part of their law, their intermediate range plan.
Trying to lighten it up.
They're gonna, they'll put an extra lane on each way from county line up on the interstate highway to Church Road. But when that's gonna happen, I don't know. The next thing, big thing along their corridor, they'll be putting in the traffic circle there at Palms.
Okay.
Your pick.
Now, what about the solar panels that they're saying about over there?
Solar panels?
Yeah.
On what property?
On the Wisman Farm, seventy acres, it's already done.
It's already done?
As far as I know.
They're gonna do it?
As far as I know.
That was either township then?
No, it's Casco Township, that's Casco Township.
You guys did?
There's a larger, there's a larger, um, uh, acreage being discussed now in Chinatownship. I believe that's at Starville Road and, um, Twenty-Sixth, Twenty-Sixth. That's like a seventy or eighty.
So township don't have a say in the matter or not, or do something like that?
All I know about the Wisman thing is they signed up, they have not approached us.
Yeah, we, that's all I know.
They have not approached the township about it for our, come before Plan Commission or that.
But they have to do that, or they're taking that for granted, you guys are gonna approve it anyways in this role of it.
Well, we have to see what they apply, okay, I can't answer that right now, so.
Can't just approve it.
What is coming down is gonna happen.
I don't know, all I heard, this was a couple of years ago, that the Wisman family or that signed up, they sent in. That's all I know.
Just on Twenty-Sixth and what?
Palms.
Twenty-Sixth and Palms, between Palms and...
Where the school is, county.
Well, it's, it's kitty corner across from the school. Um, seventy acres on the north side, our side of the road. And the larger one, um, which is being, I don't know if it's a court valley, but it certainly is a large discussion um, in Chinatownship. And then, keep your eye on the corner of Twenty-Sixth and King Road, a lot of property for sale there. So we'll see how fast the solar companies move in and who's prepared to deal with it.
But then you have to come here and get approved to put that in there, then.
Well, that's Chinatownship there.
No, yeah, but I'm talking about Casco though.
Yeah.
You have to come here and...
Yes, they would. We gotta see what size, if they fall under ordinance, we have large, I forget what, uh, acreage determination, and medium-sized and small. So. Yeah?
Interesting.
Yeah, they have not approached the township.
About it or any...
We shall see.
But if, but if it does, you guys will tell everybody.
It'll be announced like any...
It'll be announced and that, yeah.
It'll be announced.
Would it have to have a hearing too, I don't know?
Yeah, it'll be announced like any other, um, agenda item to the Plan Commission.
Okay.
It'll be treated no differently.
Gotcha, okay.
Does that one, does that fall under those House bills that passed that we really have no control over that?
See, that's what I was...
Depends on the acreage.
Yeah, depends on the size, yeah, yeah, it depends on the size, so. Okay, any other citizens' comments? Okay, um, board comments?
Okay, so, next week is, uh, Plan Commission meeting, and, um, there is a scheduled hearing for, for a public hearing for the master plan and for the ZLM services, public hearing.
Yeah, so the master plan that we've been working on almost two years, it's gonna be, they're gonna do the, um, public hearing. If there's no objection to it, they'll pass a resolution formalizing.
Next Tuesday.
Right, next Tuesday, seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Same place.
Yeah, this master plan, what master plan, the importance of a master plan, that it guides the development. You have two maps up there, one is zoning, that shows what the current law is in Casco on how it governs land use. And a master plan directs the future of that, of that law, basically.
And hasn't been changed much at all?
No, the last time we did a full-blown, um, I thought it was in the late nineties. So it was about nearly twenty-five years since that's, we redid it. Under the law, you have to examine your master plan every five years. And if you're good with it, you could by a simple vote, say, hey, we're good with it, and go on. We've had some changes, and we decided, you know, it's been twenty-five years to do the full, um, redo of the master plan, so.
And so, is this master plan that's being presented to the public, is there an expansion of the, uh, industrial, commercial zones west of Twenty-Sixth?
No, it's pretty much the same.
Pretty much the same.
So you didn't add any heavy industrial or anything like that in there? No major changes, just pretty much?
No, what, when we did this, one of the things that triggered this is when they did the Marine City Corridor Study there about three years ago. They did that, the county commissioned that study of the five townships along, um, Marine City Highway. What they found out, their proposal matched almost our master plans for all five townships, almost verbatim. They said there was more than enough land zoned industrial in the five townships. Now, they made comments, though, that some of the land is inefficiently, because we have long, deep lots that, you know, let's say a few of them sold off and split off.
Yeah, but that, that, that is causing a problem with that, with the long lots coming back from Twenty-Sixth though.
But I'm just telling you, that's, and that study, and there's some other concerns at the time. That's why we decided to do a revisit of our master plan and go do the entire process. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, all right, I have, um, we have board, other board comments. I have one here, a letter from the United Way of St. Clair County. I'd like to read this. Dear valued United Way supporter, thank you for your continued commitment to meeting the needs of our community through the United Way. The two thousand twenty-four United Way campaign kicked off on September fourth. On behalf of the Government Division, we are asking for your support. Last year, more than eighty-five hundred residents provided with services funded through our local United Way. This may improve possible for your contribution and those above it. United Way of St. Clair County and their twenty-one associate service agencies offer, offer hope by providing guidance, programs, and services to residents. For example, Visiting Nurse Association, Moonwater Hospitals, provide a hundred and twenty of our neighbors within home services. Also, the Information and Referral Service, or number two-one-one, received three thousand one hundred and nine local calls last year. In total, your support impacts more than thirty programs to ensure the stability for all residents. Please see the enclosed document. We ask you to join us in giving United Way of St. Clair County, to give St. Clair, there's no better method giving to help people in our community in so many need of ways. And that's from Kathy Hayman, the Mayor of Marysville, and well, list of people who support us on the United Way of St. Clair County. So, make good work. Might give it to a good organization. Any other? Okay, word for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn, I'll support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.